Good evening, it's Tuesday, May 28th at 7:00 PM. We call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Charlie Davidson.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Saucetta.
Here.
Charles Swinkie.
Here.
Terry Osborne.
Here.
Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Councilman Saucetta will lead us in the invocation and Councilman Schroeder will lead the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening again grateful for another opportunity that we have to assemble. And as we begin tonight, we'd ask that you'd be with those that have been hit, whether it's in Texas or Arkansas or surrounding communities by the storms over the last few days. We pray that you would give much grace and peace through the rebuild process and everything going on. We thank you though for your hand of provision that kept us safe here. And now we ask as we meet tonight that you'll bless the time, that you'd give wisdom and guidance to each of us. Thank you again for our men and women that serve and we ask that you'd protect them. We love you and ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe see it? Sorry. Dang it. Just you want to let him know at least. Okay. Okay, start. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Charlie.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Jim.
I'd second that.
Motion by Charlie, seconded by Jim to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. Public forum. No, we don't have our help. Nobody signed up for public forum tonight. Staff reports. Gina. All some good news.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the community building remodel project. The community building was built in 1970 and has served as both a community meeting place and as a place to rent for holiday and family occasions over the years. Back in February, the city contracted with D&amp;J Property Solutions to complete the improvements. And I can't wait to show you some of these photos because they did some amazing work in there. So we have some before and after photos to show this evening. This is the exterior, which was power washed and a protectant sealer was applied. New gutters were installed to help with drainage and a fresh coat of paint was put on the front Here we have the bathroom where the vanity was replaced with one that hid the unsightly plumbing as well as improving the ADA accessibility. A new toilet and urinal were also installed along with wall and flooring improvements. In the main area, the harsh fluorescent lights were replaced with warm yet still bright LED lights and the floors were leveled prior to installing new LVP throughout the building. And where we once had tables and chairs stored out in the open, we now have a closet with sliding barn doors to contain them. And on one side of the closet, we have double shelves envisioning renters to use those for storing presents, cakes, awards, or any other items for display. On the other side, we had a coat rack installed. Here we have a view looking into the kitchen. And in the kitchen, we had new cabinets, appliances, and fixtures installed. And where we once had an awkward two-tiered counter, we removed that and had that replaced with a single level surface, making it easier for passing food out of the opening. And as staff discussed visions for the remodel, we really tried to put ourselves in renters' shoes and envision what type of qualities they'd be looking for in a rental facility and incorporate as many of those as possible. Here are a few additional photos of the coat rack and just a larger view of the building and a better shot of those barn doors where we have tables and chairs stored and the new So one thing we... Yes?
Sorry, real quick. On the last one, where are those little square things along the lower half of...
Those are our outlets.
Oh, okay.
So a lot of the woodwork in the building was custom to match the cabinets and so there's actually wood trimming around each of the outlets.
Okay, thank you. Looks good.
So one thing we couldn't have known was the termite damage that we uncovered during the demo days. What we had hoped was a small area of damage revealed itself to be the entire east wall of the building. It was almost as if the outside cedar siding was the only thing holding that wall up. So I do have a video to show you. It's just a small portion of the damage that was found in the bathroom, but it represents the condition of the entire east wall. The wall eventually was reframed, new sheet rock was installed, and although no live termites were found, treatment was performed around the entire exterior perimeter as a safety precaution. Did you crash it?
While they're doing that, we have resumed rentals of it. I noticed.
We have resumed rentals. The contractors were in there for the entire month of May. They had worked for a week or so prior to that, just as we had empty slots in the rentals.
We didn't do any sort of price adjustment, did we, on their, on the rental?
Not yet.
Not yet.
But we're going to. And that'll come to council to do that. Do you know what the current rates are on that right now?
I don't have that information. Marlo probably knows.
Does anybody in the building know?
Yes. It's $50 for six hours if you are a Park City resident. If you rent it for the whole day as a Park City resident, it's $100. If you're a non-Park City resident, it's 75 for six hours and 150 for the whole day, if you're a non-resident.
Fifty, seventy-five, a hundred, 150.
Do they just call City Hall to reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
Is part of that a deposit you get back, Marlo?
We do charge $100 deposit for Park City residents and I think it's 150 for non-residents.
But that's on top of the fee that you just...
Correct. And they have to pay that either by cash or check because once they turn in the key and everything looks good, they get that back.
Thanks.
Yeah, that was...
Blondie.
I had a bad...
Sharp knife.
She made Chris.
They shredded my table.
Insulation's holding it all up.
Yeah, right.
Crazy. Wow.
Even where it looked good, it was bad.
Yeah, exactly. The outside of that tuba floor looked pretty good, didn't it?
So while our contractors were hard at work on the interior, City Public Works crews got busy doing exterior improvements. In addition to sealing the cedar siding, crews repainted playground equipment, installed mulch, repainted the shelters, replaced picnic tables, and installed several trees and bushes. As part of our stormwater MS4 permit, we replace a portion of fenced areas at the park with natural landscape barriers such as trees and bushes. We were able to remove the east portion of cable fencing with this project and our goal next year is to remove the west portion. And as part of the pilot program for rubber mulch discussed at last year's budget presentation, we did install rubber mulch in the playground area near the community building. Each white bag, if you can see in that photo up there, actually contains 2,000 pounds of rubber mulch. Thirteen bags were required, so we put a total of 13 tons of rubber mulch in that area. And that is our final product. And that concludes my presentation, but I stand for any questions you may have.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Thanks.
So next, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Jim.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Charlie.
Second.
Ben.
I'm gonna, staying I wasn't at the May meeting, so I can't approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Jim, seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero one. Next, under new business, discuss and consider a resolution authorizing Jacksonville intersection project. Sean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Charter ordinance C-39-2019 provides the city may file with the governing body a multi-year capital improvement plan for development of the city, including public improvements, acquisition of necessary land, acquisition of equipment, vehicles, or other personal property to be used. In May of 2021, council approved such a resolution, 106921, authorizing and providing for payments for cost of certain improvements within the CIP. Upon approval of the CIP, the city is now authorized to issue general obligation bonds in amounts sufficient to carry out the plans and associated costs. This resolution before you tonight will serve as the initial authorization for the improvements of the Jacksonville intersection approved at the last meeting with an estimated cost of $560,000. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Ben.
Yeah, I'm excited to get this part moving here. I know it's been a thorn in the side for some time, so I'd make a motion that we approve resolution authorizing the Jacksonville intersection project.
Thank you, Ben. Jim.
I'd second it.
Okay. And Sean, some of this, just for the folks watching at home and the folks that are joined us tonight, timing on the project starting and end date, some things like that that we want to get out.
We have a pre-bid or pre-construction meeting coming up here within about two weeks. The expectation is that it'll start somewhere towards the end of June. In the contract, 50 days were allotted for the construction of it and it'll be done in four different phases. As soon as we get the phasing plan, we will put that out on the city's website as well as Facebook to make certain everyone, because it's going to require everybody to kind of take note of how the traffic's going to be diverted throughout the various phases.
Okay. Were we still talking about having to remove some of the median?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right. Motion by Ben, seconded by Jim to proceed with the project. And Charlie, you have something?
Yeah, Sean, could you email us those as well? So if people call me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Move to item seven, executive session, discussion with the city attorney pertaining to contract negotiations related to the city's relationship with the Chisen Creek Utility Authority. Doug?
Mayor and council, I would recommend that council recess into executive session for the reasons stated by the mayor. Be the governing body, the city attorney, the administrator, and the assistant administrator for a period of 20 minutes.
Ben?
Some moved.
Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay. See no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight zero. I have seven fourteen. Seven fifteen.
It is 7:45. No binding action was taken in executive session. Our final business is governing body reports. We'll start with Charlie tonight.